This conference will now be recorded.
All okay?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker, are you ready for us to begin when it's time?
Mr. Chairman, we're recording, so I think at 6:30, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the response on that.
Sorry about that did not come through. Yeah, we are ready on recording whenever you are.
Okay, we'll start. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Haslett's Capital Improvements Advisory Committee meeting. The date is Tuesday, May 25th. The time is 6:30 PM, May 25th, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM. And my name is Greg Caddish, Chairman of the City of Haslett's Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, or Zoning Commission. We are going to do roll call attendance. This meeting is being held via teleconference, so we are doing this virtually today. So to begin with roll call before we announce a quorum as present, Mr. Hillborne?
Here.
Mr. McCusson?
Here.
Ms. Snedeker?
Here.
Mr. Wallach?
Here.
Greg Caddish is here. And Ms. Caraway? Ms. Caraway, are you present this evening? Okay, so we have one absence, Ms. Caraway, so we do have a quorum present. So at this time, we'll go to our regular agenda. First item is Agenda Item 2A. Your up for consideration is the approval of the minutes from our November 16th, 2020 CIAC meeting. Those minutes are included in our packet for review. If there's any discussion or corrections, please feel free to call those out at this time.
To make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, there's motion to approve the minutes as written. Is there a second?
I'll take it. This is Dennis.
Okay, this motion has been seconded to a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Greg Caddish is a yes as well. Moving on, Agenda Item 3A, Discuss/Consider an Act Upon a Recommendation to City Council Regarding the Haslett Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Water and Sewer Impact Fee Biannual Report. And we'll have a staff presentation. Is Mr. Antonazio going to speak to this one?
Yes.
Or is Travis?
Yes.
Travis, I'm sorry.
Travis, Mr. Antonazio, however it comes out. Yes, good evening, committee members. As I've stated in the past, when I first started in Haslett five years ago, this kind of was a doom and gloom report because there just were not impact fees being paid. But over the past five years, there has been some good development in the city. So the impact fees are tracking nearly what they were expected to be tracking. We have the MEW growth, which is the meter unit equivalent, tracking on the water plan pretty close to what was expected. The sewer plan, we're still way over expected because it's still on the old Capital Improvement Plan and Impact Fee Update. Your next item, we'll address that coming up. But over the course of at least six months, the first six months of the year, there's been over $800,000 collected in impact fees and interest, which can be used for projects on the Capital Improvement Plan. The Capital Improvement Plan is shown in Supporting Document 4. We do have a couple of projects that have been completed or developer funded. And then we're going to start looking at additional funding projects for the next budget year. Some of the ones that were in the capital plan and some of the ones that'll be in the new capital plan when you consider the next item. With that, everything is pointed in the right direction, and I will answer anything, any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for the city staff? If not, could we get a motion?
This is Jim. I'll make a motion to approve the Water and Sewer Impact Fee Biannual Report.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second. This is Doreen.
Okay, been seconded to a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Greg Caddish is a yes as well. So 2A, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 3A passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 3B. Discuss/Consider an Act Upon a Recommendation to City Council, An Update to the Waste Water Master Plan in the Impact Fee Program. We'll begin with our staff presentation again.
All right, thank you again, committee members. The Water Master Plan was updated in 2018, so the wastewater master plan needed to follow behind that. Master plans are basically the next 10 years of what is the expected growth and what needs to be fixed for that expected growth. That's basically what an impact fee is. A new development causes an impact on the system. And that translates to needing better infrastructure or replaced infrastructure. So Garver LLC was selected for the wastewater system model, demand projections, analysis, capacity update, capital improvement plan, and impact fee update. So the master plan envisions about $13.2 million, which 8.3 million is recoverable in the form of impact fees. The impact fees are charged to new developments, as I said. You can only charge, through state law, you can only charge 50% of the actual maximum fee. So that applied, makes the calculations go up just a bit for impact fees for new developments. Included a table there of the impact fee increase. Most of the things you'll see there, most of the impact fees that are paid in the city are on that first water meter size, the 5 eighths by 5 eighths. That's the one that gets charged to the single-family development, which is the prominent development that's going on in the city right now. That gets charged pretty much to every lot throughout what's being built right now in the five new subdivisions. When an industrial client comes in, they cause a bigger impact to the system based on their meter size. So those meters, the impact fees are adjusted accordingly. The Capital Improvement Plan does envision some projects where we will be upsizing some pipes just based on that you want to make sure that you don't overflow sewer system. That's really what, that would be really bad. Got to report it to the state. You got to make sure that everybody's safe from that wastewater. So as I said, Garver produced this report, the capital plan update, the land use assumptions, population projections. They include a rainfall analysis because most of the time sewers are placed in creeks or low-lying areas, and so rainwater does get in to the system. So that's that wet weather analysis. And then finally, they did produce the impact fee update. Looking at the impact fees, Haslett is still right where it is for the water impact fees, where it's about, you know, in the middle of where things are compared to other cities around Haslett. So I do believe Garver is on the line tonight, and they will be able to answer any technical questions either on the Capital Improvement Plan or impact fees. And with that, I will turn it over for questions.
Okay, at this time, do any of the committee members have any questions for the city staff or Garver?
Yeah.
I do have one. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. Out of curiosity, Table 1-1, probably for Garver. Just differentiate on peak wet weather flow between Haslett and Fort Worth for all of those years?
Yes, sir. So my name is Derek Schwenke. Good evening, everybody. And the peak wet weather flow, so what you're probably looking at that table is how City of Haslett's flows are increasing over the years, which is mirroring the population increase. And the City of Fort Worth flows stay the same value. Is that what you're looking at in the table?
Yeah, 2025 is 3.67 for Fort Worth, and then they increased to 7.34 and stay static.
Correct. So what's going on there is Fort Worth, just like everyone else in the area, is growing as well. And Fort Worth has an area that contributes to the northwest side of the City of Haslett, to the sewer system in that area. But there is an interlocal agreement between the cities that define, once the City of Fort Worth flows reach a certain capacity level, they're responsible for diverting their flows to a relief line. So their flows will, in theory, cap out because they're required to reroute their sewer flows to a separate sewer line for their own conveyance that ultimately ties into the Trinity River Authority, separate from the City of Haslett flows. That will tie into the Trinity River Authority. So that's why that number caps out at that value.
Where does all of this flow? Goes to the Trinity, T R A. Where's the wastewater treatment plant? Out of curiosity, where all this goes?
So the sewer flows for Fort Worth and the City of Haslett in this area, they go to what's called the Henryrietta Creek Interceptor. And that interceptor will take flows to the Denton Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Where is that?
That's on Lake Grapevine. It's at the top end of Lake Grapevine.
Oh, okay. Very good. Henryrietta, all right, interception.
So my question I was going to ask is, it centers on the impact fee. So were we substantially behind for an extended period of time on the impact fees we are assessing? Or have most municipalities presented a similar increase to what we're seeing here in our impact fees?
Sure, I'll take that one. I wouldn't say that we were behind. So the 10-year look ahead assigns the impact fees. And then at year five, you have to take another look at it to see if they're appropriate. What projects have been funded? If growth is occurring slower or faster, you may adjust those impact fees. That five-year look ahead happened almost right before I got to Haslett. So at that time, it was opted to stay with the same impact fee. So with the new growth, the impact fee program is going forward a lot quicker. But again, with the new growth, that requires investment in infrastructure. So that's why these impact fees, they're actually not too different from what I've seen in other cities. Some cities have a dramatic increase. Fort Worth would be one of them. They had a dramatic increase on their water impact fee. So Haslett kind of being in the middle of the same-sized cities such as Argyle and Roanoke, it's pretty fair game for anybody looking to develop in Haslett to look at these impact fees and assume they're not unreasonable.
Okay. So in comparison to a residential race you would experience in another municipality, we're on par with those so that wouldn't be a deterrent for development?
Right.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
So Travis, this is Paul again. So Figure 1.1. So you've identified all of the CIP projects for the years, and are these, where are the estimates, I guess, for each of these projects? I see Table 1.2 just has total estimated capital cost. Are each one estimated separately, or how'd you come up with that?
Let me throw that to Garver real quick while I scroll to that table.
Okay, so the question is on the pricing of the construction projects. And so each project was looked at individually, what would be anticipated of the scope of that work based upon maybe the pipe size, length of pipe, and then also other factors such as is there a creek crossing, major roadways across that can add additional construction costs? So then there was a detailed breakdown for each project. That's included in the CIP report that identifies line items for each project and the major components. And then there's also a contingency item on it because at this high level, it's a, it's very, there's some basic items, but there's also going to be, as a project would drill down further in design, there's more resolution of information in bid items and costs that are understood. So there's a high-level cost estimate that's broken down the major components, and then a contingency item on top of that.
What table is that? Where's that?
Table 4-2, and it's page 161 of your packet.
Table? 4-2, you said?
4-2 in the Capital Improvement Plan, in page 161 in your packet.
And does this also include any land acquisition costs, or is this just the construction-related costs?
This is construction-related because the capital improvements aren't for necessarily new lines, but for upsizing existing lines to handle the needed capacity.
And there wouldn't be any land acquisition associated with putting larger lines in the existing rightaways for those?
No, there's already easements or the lines are in right away.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, is there a motion?
Oh, this is Paul Wallach. I'll make a motion that we, are we on 3B? I'm sorry, Greg.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we are.
That we recommend approval of the update to the wastewater master plan and impact fee program. Recommended counsel.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve, recommend approval to city council. Is there a second?
This is Dennis. I'll second it.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Greg Caddish is a yes as well. Okay, so moving on, Agenda Item 4. So our next regular CIAC meeting will take place on November 16th, 2021, at 6:30 PM, and then that will be followed at 6:45 as a posted time for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on that date. Any discussion on the next meeting date?
Do we need to vote here, whether we're going to have it in person or not?
That will follow the same, whatever the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting format is, it will follow the same. So that'll be a byproduct of what we take up during our P and Z meeting.
Okay.
But good question. Thank you. All right, if no other discussion, we will adjourn the CIAC meeting. The time is 6:49 PM. And Mr. Tucker, when you're ready, please let me know, and we will open up the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Derek, for being on the call tonight.
Thank you.
One second for me to stop this one and start the next.
Yeah, you just let me know, and I'll wait for you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're already here.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Haslett's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The date is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. The time is 6:50 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. So in order to confirm we have a quorum present, I'm going to do a roll call vote before we begin. Mr. Hillborne?
Here.
Roll call attendance, excuse me, I'm sorry. I said roll call vote. Mr. McCusson?
I'm here.
Ms. Snedeker?
Here.
Mr. Wallach?
Here.
Greg Caddish is present, and our alternates, Mr. Hayes?
I'm here.
And Mr. Flaxbark?
Present.
Okay, so we were able to call or announce that we do have a quorum present. And this evening, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Flaxbark, feel free to join in any discussion. When we do our votes on the agenda items, we will have our regular members participate in the vote. And since we do have everybody present, the alternates won't be voting this evening. So just a couple of reminders, since this is being held via teleconference, please make sure you keep yourself muted unless you are speaking. When we open the public hearings, if you wish to speak during those, please put your name in the chat field so that we can call on you and recognize you during that time. And if you do speak, please make sure you state your name and address before you begin speaking. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item 2A, so these are items of community interest. So on May 31st, there is a virtual Memorial Day event. And there's information on how to participate in this virtual event. You can go to the haslett.org, or you can go to the City of Haslett's Facebook page. And there's also an opportunity to sponsor a US flag and recognize those who've served, maybe a loved one, or any other cause that you might want to have a flag present for. And then Agenda Item 2B is an announcement that the city offices and the Haslett Public Library will be closed on Monday, May 31st, 2021, in observance of Memorial Day. Okay, any other items of community interest? Okay, moving on. So first item for consideration is our regular meeting minutes from our April 27th, 2021 meeting. Those minutes are included in our packet this evening. If you find that the meeting minutes represent our discussion accurately, you could make a motion for approval.
That is Paul Wallach. I recommend approval of the meeting minutes.
This is Jim, also.
Hey, Jim, thank you. Okay, roll call vote or motion to approve. Mr. Hillborne?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Greg Caddish is a yes as well. Moving on, Agenda Item 4A, Hold a Public Hearing Discuss/Consider an Act on a Recommendation for a Preliminary Platte of Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, of the Harmon Edition being a 3.667 acre tract in the J M Lilly survey, abstract 979. This is generally located on the east side of Harmon Road, located north of Blue Mound Road, east and south of Keller Hicks Road in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Haslett, Texas. And we're going to begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a preliminary plat. It's being required because the proposed Lot 1 was being subdivided out of the original plat. And the, I'm sorry, the original tract was approximately three acres. Water and water service is being provided by an existing water line in Harmon Road. A sanitary sewer is being provided by onsite sewer system, and access is being made to Harmon, but from Harmon Road. No other public infrastructure is being extended at this time. Plat meets all the requirements of the city subdivision regulations in Chapter 212 of the Texas Open Code. I can each any questions you have.
Thank you. And is the applicant present this evening?
This is Bo Trainer. I'm with Peloton Land Solutions, representing John Dilvik with Alamo. So I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Is there any additional information you'd like to share with the Planning and Zoning Commission members?
No, sir. Mr., sorry, Mr. Morrison did a great job.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4A? If you do wish to speak again, put your name in the chat field just so that I can recognize you. Okay, recognizing that nobody put their name in the chat field, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. At this time, if the commission members have any questions, feel free to ask those.
Guys, there's a metal building being constructed now just north of Keller Hicks on the east side of Harmon. Is this in that same area?
This is that same lot, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm confused by the description of where it is. You said north of Blue Mound Road and south of Keller Hicks. Wouldn't it be the opposite?
I apologize. You are correct. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. I'm, thank you.
Thank you.
Where this place was. So the building is already being constructed out there?
Yes, sir. So since this is in our ETJ, we don't issue building permits. However, we do issue grading permits. The city has a record of issuing a preliminary grading permit. If the preliminary plat meets all the requirements, even though it hasn't technically been approved, it meets all the requirements of the ordinances. So just like we would anything else, we've issued the grading permit, and we would not have to issue a building permit that's issued through the county fire marshal.
and we would not have to issue a building permit that's issued through the county fire marshal.
So that's all in the county out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we know what the intended use is of that building?
I believe it's going to be a fireworks retail center, but the applicant probably speaks more to that than I can. Again, this is Bo Trainer with Peloton Land. Mr. Morrison is correct. It is the annual sales for fireworks. And they've got a limited window per state law as to when that can actually occur. So that is the use.
So that'll replace those temporary stands out there, whatever they, whatever you call them, not trailers.
Yes, sir. The idea is that when this is up and running and giving the timing of the plat and everything, it'll probably end up being in place for next year's season. But it is fully intended to replace those, the temporary structures.
Okay.
Hey, any other discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Now, this is Paul Wallach. I'll move that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat for lots one and two, block one of the Harmon addition.
Okay, there's a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat. Is there a second? Okay, it's been seconded. Roll call vote. Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yeah.
Mr. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes, and I guess I should have said, correct the description of where it is before it goes to council.
So for clarification, so that would be an amendment to your motion. But let's, let's look at.
The, the amendment, I will definitely make the change, the correction.
Yeah, I'd just hate to go to council like that.
And Greg Caddish is a yes as well. Motion passes. Moving on, agenda item four B. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a recommendation on a final plat of lot one, block one of the Harmon addition being a zero point nine two two acre tract in the J M Lily survey abstract nine seven nine, generally located on the east side of Harmon Road, located on the should be south of Blue Mound Road, east and south of Keller Hicks Road in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Hasslet. Begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. This is the final plot of that lot one. We'll make the correction in the agenda caption as well. And all the same information shared in the last item applies to this agenda item. I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. And again, does the applicant have any additional information you would like to share on the final plat?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item four B? Again, if you do wish to speak, please put your name in the chat field so that I can recognize you. Okay, acknowledging that no one put their name in the chat field, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. So if the commission members have any questions, feel free to ask those at this time. And if there are no questions, is there a motion?
This is Paul Wallach. I'll move that we recommend approval of the final plat of lot one, block one of the Harmon addition being zero point nine two two acres in that J M Lily survey.
Okay, thank you. The motion to recommend approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. This motion has been seconded to a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yeah.
Mr. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Caddish is a yes as well. Moving on, agenda item four C, discuss and provide staff direction regarding an amendment to the zoning ordinances specifically rated related to the draft exterior lighting ordinance. And I'll let, let city staff begin with insight into where we're at with this and where we used to have some, some elements of lighting requirements in our zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. I think most of you probably recall, we've, this has been a discussion probably the last couple of meetings. We, there was some belief that we had some existing lighting regulations. It's after staff did some research, it appears that the city did have some in the previous zoning ordinance. When the city adopted a new zoning ordinance in two thousand seventeen, the, those lighting standards were not carried over. I believe they weren't carried over because those lighting standards were in an overlay district, a corridor overlay district. And it's my understanding is that one of the things that the two thousand seventeen ordinance did was do away with a lot of the overlay. We had multiple overlay districts. And so I believe it was just an oversight. And so what we've done is we've, staff has done some research of some cities across the metroplex and looked to see what they're regulating and how they're regulating it. And that's how we came up with the draft standards, which you have before you today. Just real quick, I'll go through it and then I can answer any questions. But essentially, we have a purpose. We have exemptions, which are holiday lighting, special events, specific recreational issue, you know, things that really will be difficult to regulate, obviously being next to an airport, F A A and F C C lighting requirements who would restrict or exempt, I'm sorry. And then anything applied to the building code, we would also exempt. The section C is just general requirements. Not placing lighting structures in the buffer, buffer areas or setback requirements. Outdoor lighting, advertising of lighting, making sure that's shielded as well. And then we've got shielding light sources. We've also put in a restriction for light trespass limitations. Again, the whole purpose, and I probably should have gone over this in the purpose section, but main purpose of this is to protect the night sky, the natural resource, and then also protect any lights village onto adjacent properties. Preferably light adjacent onto residential properties. And then we've got some standards for wall and roof lighting. I thought this was important and not all lighting standards across the metroplex have this, but we specifically built in some standards for motor vehicle parking, storage and access, since we do have a lot of those uses here in town. And then we've talked about signs, flags, building facades, architectural features. We've prohibited certain types of lighting fixtures, cobra heads, things like that. And then we've also built in a requirement that during the site plan process, an exterior lighting plan be provided. So that's something that we can look at during the site plan review phase. I went through that very quickly. I can answer any questions that you have detailing that. I'm prepared to make any notes on any changes y'all want to see. And assuming that nothing is substantially changed tonight, meaning that there was maybe some discussion as to a direction you want to go, then what I would do is go ahead and make those changes and prepare a public hearing notice and put this on the next available public hearing agenda for, for consideration and recommendation. With that, I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, well, I, I have a couple of things. So Snedeker and I were both part of the original group that drafted the original lighting standards and and so, you know, I think some of what we were trying to protect back then was the residential properties and the dark sky that really was prominent in the Hasslet area. And we were concerned about, you know, commercial development and other development in the area that would really take away that dark sky look that we had out here, especially with the rail yard and everything else to the north of us that gives off that orange casted glow that we can all see. So there's a couple of things that I'm very interested in, and that, that is parking areas. Parking areas can be a real nuisance from a lighting standpoint. And I see that we've got twenty-foot parking or twenty-foot height poles and maybe even higher allowed in some of our commercial parking areas. Is that? Is that a standard that is consistent with other municipalities where there's residential areas in close proximity? I know you, this says a hundred feet, but a hundred feet's not that far.
To answer your question, yes, that was fairly consistent. And that was more the, one of the more restrictive ones. I, I'm, I can tell you, just to give you an idea of what cities we looked at, we looked at Argyle, Grapevine, McKinney, Frisco, and I'm gonna, maybe Ditten was the, Ditten was the fifth one that we looked at. So we tried to, you know, thinking that some of those would have the same similar uses that, that we have and some of those such as Argyle wants to protect that night sky as well. So that's kind of how we base that selection off of. That being said, I, I, I have no concerns with reducing the height. I do want to caution you on getting too low to the ground because that's going to interfere with, with some, obviously some truck traffic. But we could also play with that distance of a hundred feet and increase it to a hundred and fifty, two hundred. I, what I can also do is come back, I can look at additional ordinances, if you like, and give you a a range or a scale of what other cities do in that. But I'm open to any suggestions and I'll do whatever research you'd like to look at.
Yeah, I, you know, what I would prefer to see, and, and by all means, I want everybody to give, give thoughts on this, but I think what I would prefer to see in retail parking areas is shorter, shorter poles, maybe more of them. If that's what they feel is necessary in order to create the, the foot candles that they want to achieve in their parking areas. And then have a different standard for those industrial areas where, you know, they're trying to illuminate a drop lot or, you know, truck traffic areas that, you know, you gotta get up over the tops of trailers and, you know, cast a, a broader, you know, range of light across the, the work area. So, you know, I, I, and I thought we had like a sixteen-foot or something, a shorter than twenty-foot light standard in those commercials, in that local retail area.
I have a question with that. Did anybody not find the original draft that we had in the overlay district? And if, if they haven't, what else didn't get carried forward into the new zoning?
To, to answer the first quest, first part of that question is, yes, the original lighting standards that were in the corridor overlay district were attached to this agenda item. So you have those there in your packet tonight. To your second question, I have not done a thorough enough research at this point in time of the old ordinance versus the new ordinance to tell you exactly what was and what, what wasn't carried over at this point in time.
Okay. Well, that, that would be something that I would like to have part of the discussion is what, what is an appropriate height light fixture pole in a, in a local retail area versus what you might find in a industrialized area? Because I don't think the way this is written, it's differentiated, is it?
No, sir, you're right. So I, I, I definitely see the, the benefit to breaking out retail versus industrial. We can definitely do that.
So that was, that was one thing. And then I, I believe I'm reading in here correctly that all lighting is shielded above the horizontals. So there would be no up, uplighting permitted.
That is correct, unless it's something like a, unless it's something like an architectural feature that's shining on a building or something like that, that is correct.
Where it's accent lighting, not primary lighting. Okay, and then, and then we also had something in in some of our developments where we had asked that the lighting, and I think it was more in some of our P Ds, where we had asked that the lighting be timed so that if the business wasn't operating, the, the majority of the parking area lighting was either reduced in, you know, either cut off entirely or the intensity of the lumens was reduced significantly to, again, preserve that dark, more rural atmosphere that we, we were trying to maintain in the Hasslet area. So is there some way that we could set an expectation that if one of businesses closed that their lighting, exterior lighting in, in parking areas gets reduced by fifty or seventy-five percent or something like that?
Let me, I, so I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because there was a provision in the court, in the old lighting standards, the corridor overlay that it allowed some, and the way it was written was not written in a way that I could wrap my head around as to how we could really enforce it. It just says that it was allowed to have some flexibility based on operation and it gave some holidays and then midnight to sunset or midnight to sunrise, sunset to midnight or midnight to sunrise. It's, but it did not give any type of measurements as to what that would look like. So let me go back and look at some other ordinances. Maybe I need to broaden the, the number of cities that I looked at originally. Because none of them had any timing restrictions. But that doesn't mean we can't. I just need to figure out how to write it in a way that can be enforced.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't know if that's still a strong desire, you know. Some of the cities that you listed there, you know, they look like they're open for business twenty-four hours a day, but it's because there's so much, you know, retail occurring in some of those areas and the lights are always on when it, if it's not daylight. And I don't know, maybe, maybe there's a broader group of people who want to see that, see Hasslet look like that, you know, that's not what we were looking for, you know, when we wrote the initial lighting ordinance for the City of Hasslet. That's why we tried to encourage that lighting to be reduced during non-business hours. So I say that for the benefit of the rest of the planning and zoning commission who wasn't around when we wrote some of the initial ones. And then the last, yes, sir?
Yeah, this is Paul. Yeah, remember, there was a of, any happy, but Harmon and Westport Parkway. It was another distribution facility, trucking. And I remember you bringing up the question, could they could the lights be motion sensitive? I think was your, was your question. And I think they agreed to that. So if there was no
They did. They said, I, I believe they said they would explore it. Yeah, you're right.
You know, so if there was no truck movement out there, the lights, the lights go off or they only go on in the area where maybe one or two trucks are coming in or moving, you know, at, at any given time.
So maybe that's, maybe that's another item that you could explore. Wes, when you look at some of these other ordinances, their motion activated parking in some of these industrialized areas versus always on lighting.
You know,
I'll add that to my list.
Yeah, the, that's, that was that one location. I think we, and the latest one that was over there on the west end of Westport Parkway, next to the well, where that old house is, across the street from the other developments. None of that stuff will have motion or even the lights dimmed or turned off or anything. I don't remember any of that stuff being talked about on all of that new development on the, call it on the west side of Amazon.
Yep, and they're not shielded. Yep. And they're not shielded, those fixtures weren't shielded in the ways in which are described here. And yeah, it's unfortunate.
Yeah. And then at the end of intermodal parkway, that huge distribution development that's going on there, if that lighting is not shielded and particularly if it's on 147, those people at the end of, help me with the name of the streets, but there by the jail station, you know, all the way budding up to Sweetgrass on the far east end. What is that area called? Off of, off of 156?
It's Hasslet Park.
Yeah, Hasslet Park. I mean, all of those people are going to be looking at, they could be looking at lights. Well, and they'll have, of course, have Hasslet Parkway between them and that development. And I'm sure it'll be lighted. So I don't know that it makes much difference for that, for that intermodal development, but there's a lot of commercial development out there that doesn't have any sort of shielded lighting or timed lighting or motion sensitive lighting. It's basically on.
Now, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this at this point. Let's keep in mind that the, any new ordinance that's adopted would only affect new development or significantly renovated or, or remodeled development. So, okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure we wouldn't be going back and retrofitting businesses.
No, 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 I understand that. I mean, but that's my point is there's, there's where, where's the next new development that this ordinance got to impact that's going to make much of a difference, I guess is my question. I know what we're trying to do and I agree, Greg, totally, but there's a lot of lighting out there already.
There is. And if, and if this makes life better for one resident, then I would, I feel it's worth our time to put the effort into coming up with the right standards for lighting.
I do too. I agree.
And, and then just, I have two more points and then I'm going to turn it over to anybody else who has questions or observations here. I don't see a color spectrum in this lighting ordinance for specific areas or like, so in a, in the retail area, do we want to have a consistent color spectrum of lighting? Are we okay with each retail development coming up with their own types of fixtures, their own color spectrums they want to work with. So if one wants to use very bright white light versus another who wants to use something with an orange cast to it versus, you know, something else. Are we okay with those differences? Or would we rather see specific color spectrums maintained in areas that, where there's going to be multiple development projects going on? Personally, I think a color spectrum would be better, a defined one. So maybe that's just another item to research to see if anybody's done anything like that.
I, I will definitely, I've added that to my list. I did not see any type of color spectrum requirement in the ones I looked at. One thing, and you briefly mentioned, and it was something I considered, and I, I think it was maybe Frisco, I think. They had a requirement and they specifically, and they provide illustrations to such that they restricted what the fixtures looked like. I was a little afraid with that because as we all know, fixtures, technology, everything changes. And if we get into a situation like that, I don't want to get into where we're either myself or future staff that's constantly having to come back and make changes. There is such a thing as too restrictive. I know y'all understand that. But so if that's something that you think is worthwhile and I can explore a little bit more, tell me tonight and I'll do that. But that was my initial response when I saw that. At first I liked it, but then I stepped back and thought every time something changes, we're remending an ordinance step.
I, I, I personally don't have an interest in trying to determine what's the best fixture. I, I think it's our job to make sure that they manage their light consistent with how we want it to be presented in the city Hasslet. And then whether they do that with a round fixture, a square one, or some other shape, I don't really care. Maybe others have a different viewpoint. Yeah. I mean, you look at a city like Southlake, they have, I mean, they're, they are very specific on what fixtures need to look like. When you look at their ordinances. So maybe, maybe there's some that feel that we should do that. And if so, then let's, let's make sure we speak about that now before we take this forward and write an ordinance and then realize we wanted to do something more with it.
Does Southlake, in their lighting ordinance, do they specify certain hyper fixtures in areas, Greg?
I was having a very difficult time hearing you, Mr. Wallach. Sounds like there's a, sounds like there's some background noise.
Somebody not here.
Now you're clear.
All right. Yeah, I heard that echo too. Guy said, does Southlake have, do they specify particular styles or types of lighting in different places?
I did not look at Southlake's. So if, I mean, that's something I just added. When, when the chairman brought it up, I thought that's probably a good one to look at. So that's going to be on my research list.
Yeah, I mean,
They, they specify what the poles look like, what the top fixtures looks like. They do the same thing for all the signs, sign posts, everything.
Well, yeah, I've seen that before Pearland, places like that down around Houston, but but I mean, Wes has got a point. I mean, you start putting, you know, you use this type of light or this style and styles and types change over time. And the next thing you know, that fixture is not even manufactured anymore.
Now, you could do some things where you, you keep people from just putting a metal pole up with the light on top of it. You know, and, and I think that, you know, Southlake wanted to maintain a certain look and, you know, class, class to their development. So. So my, my last question, my last question, then I'll yield is on B2 luminous tube lighting. So Wes, specifically, what is that?
The way I understood it, because I had to look that one up myself, it's the, you see them on sometimes patios or something like that. It's almost like accent lighting is, is when I did a Google search and looked at it that way. And so it, it puts out very little light and it's more of like accent lighting on a dining patio for dining or something like that. I will admit, I did a lot of Googling on different terms and things as this was being written because there's a lot of specifics on lighting ordinances that I was not familiar with.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or thoughts there about what we should attempt to include in our, in an ordinance if we were to move this forward?
This is Matt. I, I have just, I don't know if it's a question or an observation, but I mean, I looked at like some other ordinances from other municipalities and, and I noticed in the one that we have, there's a lot of shall and shall not. And, and the way I read it, and this is, is, you know, how the city wants to go forward. If we want to, to me, that's restrictive. That's, I mean, shall, shall not, not negotiable. And if that's the way that we want it to go, then, then I think it's appropriate. But you, when you, when you put in that decisive language, like I said, it makes it so it's not really negotiable after that and things that are prohibited. And I said, I don't know if it's just an observation, but you know, just my own curiosity that, like I said, is, is that the direction we want to go in?
Thank you for that, Mr. Hayes. You're exactly right. Typically when you're writing ordinances such as this one, the things that you want to regulate, want to make sure that are protected, you write as a shall or shall not. When you start using language as should or may, then people that are enforcing them, the people that are, you know, developing a development usually found that as, well, that's just what the city would prefer, not what they're going to require. So your point is well made. It's, if you see something into that you think is too restrictive that says shall, then I would ask, you know, let's bring it up and let's talk about it in this, in the setting because as a commission, if y'all feel like it's not that important and it can be a, just a suggestion and not a requirement, then I'm all for that. I just, I made the assumption that we would want to go a little bit more, more restrictive on this, within reason, of course. But, but again, that's up for y'all's debate. And if you want to direct me to write it a little bit less lenient or more of a suggestion and not more of a requirement, then that's what I need to hear tonight. So I can make those changes.
Thank you very much.
I think the shall and shall not is necessary in an ordinance. Because of just what you said, Wes, it becomes, you know, an interpretation later and makes it difficult to enforce. We also have the provision for variance to an ordinance too. If someone has something that they want to bring and present, we have an option to look at that, I would expect. Is that true?
You do. What we've done historically here in, in Hasslet or is, I say historically in my eight months here, if, how much history is there? But, but what we've done is any type of site development deviation from the ordinance, we've just attached it to the site plan. So y'all have either recommended approval based on, let's say landscaping buffer or I think landscaping buffer is probably the most popular one since I've been here. But, but anyway, so you can do that. You always have that option. So yeah, I think I answered your question as well.
Yeah, as long as it's clearly called out as an exception to the ordinance. Yeah, except ordinance number so and so, paragraph so and so says this, and this is what the people want to do and give us an option to look at the alternative. And compare to the original ordinance rather than just this is an exception to the ordinance. And then we don't know what the ordinance said. See what I mean? Because unless we have it in front of us, you can't hardly differentiate.
I, I read this with a very critical eye where, where these shells and shell knots were. And I thought you did a really good job with that, putting those in the right places. It, you know, when I reflect on all of the input and discussion that we've had over many projects recently where this, our citizens have offered input or, you know, used the public hearing to weigh in on or provide thoughts on these projects. There was an overwhelming interest to keep Hasslet feeling more rural. Now, whether, whether we accommodated them through those development projects or not, you know, that's, I guess that's a, up for debate. But there's things that we can do with light, lighting that I think can contribute to that feel. And there's things that we could do that would continue to erode that feel. And I think the way this is written is written so that it protects that feel as much as possible with one exception. And I think I missed one, Wes, and I forgot about it. But under the prohibited items, I1, those refractor lights, I don't think those should be allowed anywhere.
Okay. So you just want to just prohibit it throughout?
Personally, I don't like them. They did, they're uncontrolled light.
Okay. All right. No, I can make that change.
Yeah. Cause you can, I mean, you can see them from a, you know, you can see them from a distance. Even if the, the loom, you know, the lumens at the property line are low, you can still see them from a distance.
Are you talking about item I, Greg? I1 and 2? The 1?
Yes. So, so there's two types of fixtures outlined in number one. There's the Cobra headlighting, which is upon a big pole, the arm that sticks out in a light fixture that hangs off of it. It's kind of a bubble on the end of it. And then the other type is what you might find in front of a barn. You know, utility company might set a, a, a light out there that just casts light in all directions.
These are already, this is, these are prohibited by this ordinance.
Well, so the, the way the refractor one is written, it's, it's only prohibited if it has something other than an incandescent light source, the way that's, the way that's currently written. I think it doesn't matter whether it's incandescent or LED, I think, or other, I think it should be, I think those should be prohibited.
We'll make that change. That's, that's easy.
Glad, glad that you can, you know the difference.
Anybody else have any other thoughts? It's not often we have an opportunity to go back and visit some of our ordinances. So we, we always seek to be very thoughtful about how we do that and not rushed to make changes. And this is where your collective wisdom becomes very important in the direct, future direction of the city.
Just a suggestion, Wes, when you make modifications to this, can you make the modifications in another color, red or blue, something? That'll stand out. We can, you know, cross out what it was and and, and then write the new wording there in a different color. So we can see what it used to say and now what you're based on all of this conversation tonight.
So you don't want to go back and forth between old and new ordinances? Sir, I can, I understand. I completely understand. And normally what I do in this case, I don't think y'all had the pleasure of going through a, a new ordinance like this with me. But normally what I will do is to attract changes so that you can see the original, you can see what was taken out. You can see suggested, I may even put comments into this being the first stab, I, I had no intention of thinking that y'all were going to bless it and have me go forward with a public hearing notice at the next meeting. So the next stab you'll see will be something hopefully a little bit more of your liking. But I suspect we'll probably have additional changes then. Typically these types of things go through a couple of different revisions. And I appreciate what the chairman said. This is the time now that we need to take the time and get it right and, and not learn that. I mean, any ordinance, when you adopt it, there's some learning curve and maybe you need to make some changes, but hopefully we try to reduce it as much as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other feedback for the city staff this evening on this item? So Wes, do you think you would have a draft that would be ready for review by our next meeting that we could potentially take action on? And if it's, if we feel like it's not ready, we could continue it?
I, that's my plan to do my best is to get you, I mean, these are not, what you've asked of me today does not strike me as just a lot of glaring changes. I think you've been pretty straightforward and given me some good direction to look at. So not foreseeing any unforeseen circumstances. I, I feel like I could get you something back relatively soon. By the next, by the next, like the, whenever our next meeting is in June. And then if y'all are good with it, then I would schedule a public hearing date for your July meeting. And then we would hopefully recommend approval at that meeting and it would go to city council early August.
Okay. So you don't think we would be ready for a public hearing with June?
I, I mean, I guess what I could do if, based on what y'all have seen, if y'all are comfortable with based on what y'all have seen, if y'all are comfortable with me trying to implement some of the things, we could always advertise a public hearing in June. You could open and close the public hearing, that way we wouldn't have to re-advertise it again. And if that way, if something happens and, I'm sorry, I forgot what month I was in real quick. If something happens in June that y'all aren't comfortable enough to make a recommendation, you can still, you would have already met the statutory requirement of the public hearing, so we wouldn't have to re-advertise in July. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we just continued the item. If we felt like there was additional revisions we wanted to explore, we could continue it until July, right?
That's correct. I can do that.
Okay. Good. Ready to move on to four D? Do you have any other questions for us? Before we go ahead, move forward?
No, I think I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item four D, discuss, consider and act on a format of future meetings specifically related to the meeting protocols in regards to changes and COVID-19 restrictions. So this, this is, I'll let the city staff read the report that they've provided and then we can go from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. I don't have a lot to report. I think everybody's well aware that, um, city council has, uh, established the June first date as an opening and, and we're going to be back to normal with normal schedules and, and hopefully back to pre-COVID schedules and, and working environments. Therefore, um, your next meeting, uh, in June, we could, if the board so chooses, conduct that in person. Um, I, I'm open to the conversations. Uh, I can answer any questions you have or, or any insight.
Okay, so we'll open it up for discussion.
Can we make a motion?
Uh, well, let's have some discussion first, because I have a couple of questions.
Have discussion, then ask for a second, but.
Well, I have, I guess I have a, a administrative question. So if, if we return to in-person meetings, would somebody still be able to join remotely if, let's just say for a reason they chose not to be present for personal reasons or even professional reasons, you know, I, I do travel for work and occasionally I am out of town on our meeting nights. Could we still join via go-to meeting if, if we return to in-person meetings? Do you know the answer to that?
As long, here's my understanding. Um, as long as we have a, a quorum present in the room, then, uh, and, and I think we can do that. The only thing I would caution you on, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know if this is necessarily if the, if everybody on P and Z knows at this point, but, um, Diana had, her, actually she is retiring from the city and her last day is tomorrow. So normally what you see Diana doing is running the go-to meeting, taking minutes, and then me doing the, the presentation. That's going to be me and then thankfully, uh, Mr. Tucker and I believe Mr. Stephen Harvey are going to kind of do dual duty on us, but they're going to be doing the go-to meetings and, and the audio visual stuff. Um, so it gets a little bit difficult when you start, the more you add to it, but, um, I guess if I could say this from a staff perspective, we would appreciate to do it all or none and not do a, a hybrid of both. But, um, we're, we, we work at the pleasure of the commission and so we'll do what we can.
Okay, the, there were instances where we did that even before COVID, we did remote participation. The, the caveat was that as chair, I would not chair the call or chair the meeting if I were joining remotely. We want, you know, we, we wanted the meeting to be chaired from the room, but I could still participate in discussion and voting.
I am kind of at a, a handicap here because I wasn't there with that, that was prior to me. Um, but, uh, I mean, if there's a policy out there, then we'll follow that policy if it allowed. If that allowed you in the past to do it, then I don't see why we couldn't do it going forward.
Ms., Ms. Snedeker, you, you, you participated in meetings where I joined remotely and there were a few others that joined remotely from time to time. Did you feel that that was a disturbance to the ability to have an effective meeting?
No, I did not. In fact, it, it actually helped at times.
So I, I guess selfishly, I would like the option to be able to do that if necessary, but it needs to be pre-arranged. It can't be just, you know, thirty minutes before the meeting, oh, I'm not going to show up, can you, can you hook it up to a go-to meeting? That needs to be pre-arranged. That would be my expectation.
That, with that caveat, I think that's definitely something we can do.
Wes, I'm going to jump just real quick, um, not to steal your thunder or anything, but if there are people in the, I, you said it, Wes, I just want to make sure that P and Z hears it. If there are people in the room, it has to be a quorum present. So if people are calling in and there's not a quorum present in the room, then it is not a meeting.
I would agree with that as well.
I think Diana said that last time. She told us that, yeah, we had to have a quorum present in the room. And as vice chairman, I would make a motion, Greg can never miss a meeting.
Well, then I might as well just bow out.
No, I'm just kidding.
So any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, what was, what's the experience been relative to applicants and citizens calling in? Did, did that work before? Was that available before?
No, that was not, that was not available. The only, the only use of remote participation was for, for P and Z members to join the meeting, participate in the discussion. It was not a, it was not available for the general public to participate or the, the applicant on any agenda items to participate.
And I would agree with that. I would think they would need to be present in the room.
Well, I for one am in favor of getting us back in our room together.
Does anybody object to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so when we get, when we make a motion, let's make sure we, you know, that's first and foremost that we want to meet in person, right? So second part of it, do we, do we want to provide an option for AP Planning and zoning commission member to join remotely, yeah, arrangements are made in advance?
Yes.
Okay, so we'd want to include that in a, that motion as well. And then we would want, we would want to make, we'd want the C I A C to follow the same protocols?
Uh, yes.
Do we need to discuss face masks or anything like that or spacing or how will that all be managed?
So if you, um, if the commission wants to require people, my understanding is, and any other staff on the call, if I'm saying something that you've got something different, then please don't hesitate to jump in. Um, my understanding is that each board commission can kind of set their own policies. Um, now keep in mind, there is a governor's order that says we can't require face masks, we can only encourage. Um, and so, uh, it's to your point on the face mask, to, um, your point on any other precautions, you already said the dyes, the dyes has, um, all of the, uh, plexiglass in between, so, um, I believe if I'm not mistaken, Travis and Thad, back me up on this. I believe that there's even a, a plexiglass in front of the public speaking, um, podium there in the chambers. So I believe that caution is taken care of. We'll probably also have chairs spaced out, uh, just as another precaution in the audience. Um, if there's anything else that you think we need to do, then obviously within reason, I think staff will do everything we can to, to accommodate that.
Yeah, I, I think the only other thing I would say is any shared resources, like, you know, the, the resources at the, table where all the commission members, you know, that that gets cleaned or there's sanitizing wipes available if somebody would like to clean it before they use it.
Yeah, all those procedures are already set in place. Yes, sir. All those procedures are already set in place.
Okay. I can't think of anything else I would, I would expect. Does anybody else have any other expectations?
No, but I have a question. When we're in person, and for instance, the, the agenda, um, all of the agenda items and all that, are those displayed somewhere where we can read them, you know, from the chamber table? I guess we have to sit up there at the, um, council desk? Or do we read this off of laptops? I mean, how do we off those little laptop thing?
You can do it one of two ways. There'll be, there's monitors that are in the room that will be displaying, just like we're displaying here on, on the go-to meeting. The city staff will, uh, will control the, what's presented to the room. There's a monitor on the wall for the city, for the public participants to see what's being presented.
Yeah.
And then there's a, there's a monitor that you'll be able to see all this information on. And you can use your tablet to scroll and look at the different exhibits that aren't being displayed on the screen as we go through the agenda items. Or you can ask that an exhibit be presented.
Yeah, I think I've said this before, I just have a hard time looking at anything on that tablet. It's just so small for me. But I'll, I'll figure it out when we get back in June.
Okay, anything else that anybody would have an expectation? Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, starting with the June meeting that we, uh, meet in person. And, uh, everything else we discussed. Anybody there that wants to be, participate needs to be in person. However, uh, any of the, uh, P and Z's members can join remotely if necessary.
Okay, motion's been made to return to in-person meetings with the option to join remotely if, if necessary. Is there a second?
This is Jim, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded by Jim. Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne?
Yes.
Mr. McHusson?
Yes.
Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Greg Caddis, yes as well. Well, I for one, I'm looking forward to meeting all of our new members face to face. Alright, and we don't need agenda item five, we don't need six, status of current projects. There's an exhibit in our packets that you can review, future agenda items. Anything in particular? We, we've already talked about the lighting ordinance, anything else that you know that we need to be thinking about working on at a future date, Wes?
Um, no, I know that at the last meeting, we had quite a bit of conversation about several future agenda items. Um, one of those being a, a training situation, which, um, I still think we need to do sometime in the summer, probably, uh, July or, or August at the very latest. Um, but other than that, I don't have anything at this point in time. I would like to take a real quick minute, I've already said it once, but, um, for those that don't know, Diana Buchanan is retiring from the city tomorrow. I just want to say, even though she's not on the call, I appreciate everything she's done for me coming on board and, and learning everything. And I know that all of y'all appreciate everything she's done for y'all as well, so thank you.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a comment about that here in a second. So do we have a full agenda that, as you see it right now for our next meeting?
No, I think we'll probably have two very minor plats that will come forward. Uh, there may be a, a small ordinance amendment to the subdivision ordinance that I may bring to y'all, but, um, it, it's probably premature. I'd like to get it in front of y'all as soon as I can, but, um, it may be premature at this point in time. But no, I don't have anything that's just glaring right now or any, any big development project or anything like that going on.
Okay, so let, let me go back to what you said. So there, there's several instruments the city uses and this, we, we started this conversation last, last month. The land use plan, the zoning map and the, the future land use plan, I guess, thoroughfare plan. Those are instruments that the city uses for, you know, guiding development and allowing applicants to understand what, what uses are permitted where. So we don't ever influence changes to that without the city council directing us to do so, right? Is that correct, Wes?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So it's not an instrument that we could open up for discussion and make, make changes to. But we, we could take time to orient the, the commission members to the content or the, the purpose of those instruments and give an overview of what's on those instruments. Is that something we could arrange if we did it in that format?
For your next meeting?
I don't know, but it would you, is it possible that you could be ready to do that next meeting or do you need more time to prepare for something like that?
I think, I mean, I, to, to put together something that would, um, outline the tools that we have and how they work, we could definitely get something like that prepared. Um, I don't know how much in-depth we could go into the, you know, like what each says, you know, because obviously there's a lot in the zoning ordinance, there's a lot in the conference plan, there's a lot in subdivision ordinance. But just to talk about how those tools work and, and how staff uses them and also to give you maybe a little bit of insight of what happens to an application before it gets to you, we could definitely have something like that ready for your June meeting.
Okay, and, and I want to make sure that we don't start discussion like, well, why is this, why is that depicted that there or, you know, why? The why questions, we can't be doing any of that, you know, that's, that's not what I want to set up. It's just on a how and why. This is a, an opportunity to just educate everybody to the content. These instruments are on the website, you can go to city hall, you can sit, sit and look at them all you want. But this is really just to make sure that everybody understands those instruments and what they're used for and how an applicant uses them for the things that they're considering doing. And then, and then maybe just briefly touch on, Wes, then, you know, what's, what opens those documents up or what starts the process for those documents to be considered for revision?
Okay, we can do that.
If you could add a couple of comments on that, because it's not for us to decide.
Could we have this as some sort of workshop perhaps that would also include our new mayor and the two new council members? So we have an opportunity to all have the same discussion at the same time?
You've just gone above my pay grade, Mr. Markerson. Um, the, I, what I can do, and I've had this conversation with the city manager, we have not set any type of date or any type of a formal plan for getting that together, but we have had that exact conversation. Um, and so I think that we can work toward that. I can't sit here tonight and promise you that we can do that at the, um, at the next meeting. But I think what, and please correct me if I'm hearing you wrong, Mr. Chairman, but I think what we're asked, what is being asked of right now is just an overview of the tools and the instruments that we have as staff and applicants have and how they use those and how they work together. And while I tend to agree with, I think what you're saying, Mr. Markerson, that that would be beneficial to others to hear. Um, what I do with planning and zoning commission may be a little bit more in-depth than what I would do with. others in the room, just because y'all are, y'all are the ones that have the priority to review that and to make sure you understand that, and the processes and everything that go on before it gets to y'all, so, um.
Right. Does, does that help? Yeah, and I like the idea of a workshop, you know, there, there's been many of those over, you know, pre-COVID, there were many opportunities where some of the different commissions, city, join the city council in reviewing things that were being considered for the city. And I think it's important that we as a body, you know, that's representing the city of Hasslet, appointed by the city council, we understand the interest, goals and objectives of our newly appointed city council, you know, we, we serve at their leisure, and we, we should be very aware of what their interests are when we, we had to perform our duties as we've been selected to do. So I, I would welcome the, the city council opening up the opportunity for a joint workshop, for them to share a vision and talk about the future Hasslet.
I think that would be great.
I just don't have the, you know, it's not my position to tell the city council to participate in a workshop, that would, that would have to come at their direction.
Well, we, we could make the offer, I guess, right?
Yeah, and we could certainly express interest, and, and I didn't think that that's completely appropriate, that we would be interested in hearing from the city council and what, and what the, you know, their vision is for the city. All right, so I think we're done with the future agenda items, uh, no other changes to our meeting calendar for the rest of the year.
Totally, I'm sorry, I also, Greg, I had one more thing here, I wanted to ask Wes if, if, if you had any luck in getting Text dot to come and talk to us about the 156 improvements. Wes, you there?
I can take that. This, this is Travis, uh, I can certainly reach out to Text dot, they do have 60% schematics prepared right now. Uh, I know that the, uh, city of Erlison is experiencing a similar expansion on I-35, and Text dot did give them a presentation, so I will reach out to the project manager at Text dot and ask them if they would be able to, uh, prepare a presentation to show, to show y'all.
And if, if they were, if they were unwilling to do it, would INCOG possibly have something that, that they could come out and share, or is that outside of their scope?
Um, it's, it's a Text dot project, so I, I would assume it would fall on Text dot because they're the ones funding it. And they're the ones that are holding the public meetings, so I will, uh, I'll reach out and see what I can, what I can do, uh, to get them to come to talk to y'all.
Okay, that'd be great. So, if we can't for, I know we can't force them to do it, but we would certainly appreciate their willingness to come out and share what the, uh, what the plans are as they understand them today.
So Travis, you, you'll talk to the project manager, I mean, with the district engineer, the Fort Worth District Engineer, I doubt you could get him to come, but it would certainly be worthwhile, because that's the decision maker.
Sure, I'll reach out, um, I'll start with the project manager, and if I don't get a response, I can elevate it, that's, uh, that's the gloriness of a Text dot structured, uh, system, that you can always go up higher.
Yeah.
Okay, well, uh, any, anything else? All right, so, yeah, before we adjourn, I want to, you know, also just publicly thank Diana for all her hard work over many, many years of working with the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city. She has done a phenomenal job of guiding us, yeah, and instructing us where we needed, uh, instruction, providing information when we, we sought to, you know, gain knowledge about either our ordinances or the protocols for conducting proper meetings. She has been an invaluable resource to me as a chairman and, and all the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And while she will be sorely missed, I know we're, we're still in very good hands, and we've got very capable people. But, uh, yeah, we, we wish her well, and we thank her for all her years of dedicated service. And what's that? Ms. Snedeker?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We are adjourned, the time is 8:03 PM. Thank you, everybody, have a wonderful evening, and thank you for being here.